Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, November 3rd, 2025. If you could stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, welcome. At this time, we'll open the meeting to public comments. We respectfully request that items already on the agenda not be addressed and that your comments be limited to three minutes so that everyone has the opportunity to address the board. Later in the agenda, there'll be a second opportunity to address items raised during the meeting. Any public comments? Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
He's there.
Larry Brown. This is, by the way, National Family Literacy Month. Those who can read, go thank a teacher. Reading. The United States Refugee Center, June 1st, 2025, had a record of 23,795 Afghan refugees. This included those people who had served as translators and in the offices of the United States Armed Forces presence in Afghanistan. That was June 1st. July 22nd, Trump basically kissed them off. Their refugee status was ended. On October 21st, Trump, ever, ever attentive to the needs of the unfortunate, dropped the refugee number to 7,500 white South African Africans. Interesting. Elon Musk spent his entire childhood, up to the age of 19, in the comfortable systemic racist South Africa. Two quotes. Every gun that is made, every warship launched, every rocket fired signifies, in the final sense, a theft from those who hunger and are not fed, those who are cold and are not clothed. That's one quote. Second quote. I love the smell of deportation in the morning. Dwight Eisenhower, Donald Trump.
Thank you. Okay. Announcements to community calendar. Please help protect our lakes, drink and water, clean up your yard and pet waste. Remind it to all residents that winter parking ban for the town of Milton and Milton Mills is in effect starting December 1st, 2025 through April 15th, 2026. The van prohibits parking in or on public ways, public right of ways and public parking lots from 10:30 PM until 7:00 AM and during and in special declared snow emergencies. Each violation will be subject to a fine and a towing fee. New business, Katrina from Green Energy, New Hampshire, to present the Board of Selectmen with the bronze award.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Casper from Green Energy, New Hampshire, and I just wanted to present you with this award. Just wanted to give a quick shout out. This award is from Soul Smart for the work that has been done for your solar ordinances. To begin with, Bruce Woodruff, your town planner, worked long and hard, incredibly well, was one of the first to finish this project. Really want to thank him for all that work. Karen Golub for initiating this idea and for so much work in the follow-up and all the extra emails that had to go back and forth to make it happen. All the planning board members of Milton for all the hours they spent reviewing and approving the updates and the support of all of you. Thank you so much for, and the town administrator, for allowing this to happen and for your great work on this. You have won the bronze award. So, this is the award. And then you have some very nice ways to attach that. Do you mind if we snap a photo? Is that cool?
That'd be great.
All right, let me, do you mind taking one?
Oh, sure.
There we go. You guys can stand or sit, whatever you like. All right, come on. Let's make it a whole thing. We'll put you in like a newspaper.
Say, as opposed to like, let's reach across the table.
I like that. Here, why don't you hold it? All right. Yeah, no, thank you. Bravo to you guys.
All right.
Thank you. That's yours. This is yours.
All right.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. And I'm gonna stay just while you talk about the next few things and then I'll...
What's that?
I'll stay while you talk about the next few things.
I just, I just want to say thank you to, of course, all the planning board members, Karen, Bruce. They're, they're all huge assets to the town of Milton and I can't be proud enough to be honored with that, that award and all their hard work. So, thank you.
I will add that we were one of only four towns out of 35 that completed all the, the work to get an award.
That's great.
That's huge. Okay, so up next, Ms. Golub, following up the solar feasibility study and energy audit.
Yeah, I thought, I asked Richard to, to add this only because I thought it would be a good idea while Katrina was here, in case she had any questions. So, first on the energy audit. Katrina got the wheels going on that and contacted the woman at Eversource. I actually did receive a follow-up from her before this, right before this meeting. So, I will be working with her, providing the information on the locations, which in, in working with Humphrey, we've chosen to focus on this building and the main fire station for the audits. I guess they actually work with a third party. So, we'll be working on getting, getting that in the, in the queue to, I'd like to, you know, get that done as soon as possible. So, on the solar efficiency study, Andy and I have been communicating with, with the folks at Soul Smart. We've provided them with all the information that they requested, along with all the electricity data. So, our next step, which we thought was a good idea, is to have just a, a quick Zoom meeting with them, more than anything to level set, you know, expectations on what they're gonna provide us and to make sure, you know, they, they have a clear idea of what we expect from them. So, if you're available Thursday, anytime between 12 and 2, let me know and I'll let, let Zach know.
Okay.
So, that is the next step. And then they'll do their deep dive, deep dive into getting started on, on a feasibility study on solar, so.
No, I know on the energy study, because we're doing that right now at the school. The thing is, like, windows are out of the, like, they, like, no windows. I mean, the police station is a little bit older than this building, isn't it? Rich?
This building's older than the police station.
It is? Does the police station have, did we change the lights in there?
We changed the lights in all of the buildings, yeah.
Because other than, like, insulation, like, because I'm going through it right now with, with the schools. I mean, the lights have all been done too. I didn't know if there was any other, like, I mean, the only building that came to my mind was, was the police station. You know, like I said, other than insulation and, and lights, they're not gonna really do much and, and I think...
I can help you with that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, do you want me to go out there? So, they will do the insulation, weather, the weather stripping, look for places where there might be leaks you're not aware of. But there's also some great work they can do in helping you understand what you want to do with your HVAC. So, maybe you, yeah, maybe you haven't, maybe you have something down the road and you just want to start planning for it now. The last thing you want to do is have a catastrophe happen. You have to go buy whatever you have to buy. Plan it out and ready and they can tell you about all the different rebates that are available. There's also heat pump, hot water heaters that have really big benefits. There's so many different areas that you can do aside from just, you know, windows is never an affordable real, real option. But yeah, the insulation and, and the weather stripping is great, but that, there are the layers too.
And the reason when I, and just when Karen and I talked, the reason I, I talked about the fire station here, these are the two most expensive places we're paying for energy-wise right now. The old air conditioning, I mean, we had more energy efficiency with the, you know, with the heat pumps and everything else, the mini splits. So, there's possibilities for that. We've had problems with the heating system here. We're having prob, you know, the lights out here on the, we talked about the lights out in the parking lot are another issue. And you know, there's ways of coming up with more, those are LEDs, but they're still not working efficiently. The ventilation aspect of it around our furnace and that. When you sit in Brittany's office area, it's either 100 degrees along the wall or it's 65 degrees against the, the backside of the office. So, there's some things in there that, that I thought we could look at. And obviously, the more expensive one is the fire station, it's a bigger building and everything else. What can we get out of it to see if there is a way to save some things? We've had problems with the heat system over there and everything else. There might be some ways of, we ended up replacing a whole bunch of stuff, but there may be some maintenance things or other things that we can turn around and get it checked.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to, of course, you know, the options. I just didn't know if...
No, I thought about the, I did think about the police department, the police station too, but right now I figure we can start with these two. The police station's actually been very efficient here, energy-wise here recently.
Well, we did do the roof too. We did insulate.
After we did, after we placed the roof and replaced the interview room for the third time, we did the spray-in for the ceiling. So, we sprayed the entire ceiling and the entire crawl space above the building. So, that insulation has been corrected, yeah.
It got really efficient. We, we did that in our town safety complex and 50% of our cost just went away once it was insulated. So, it's a big deal. It's really helpful. But also, just so you know, heat pumps should be getting funding starting in the spring of next year, which we don't have right now through the here or here, I forget which one it is. There's a, some funding coming that way too. So, just having this all done means that when something comes along, you'll be able to...
Be at the top, yeah, it'd be nice to be at the top of the list to get some assistance.
I want to comment too, that Karen and, and the people that are working on this, your town is ahead of almost everyone on these curves and you're just doing really well. I think it's great the way you work together and that you're communicating so well. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Karen, thank you.
Yeah, and just one other item, just from my own, you know, looking at this building, something that from us might, you might want to consider is, in the winter or even in the summer in the severe heat, having these type of doors not be an exit or an entry or whatever, and requiring everybody to go through the double doors. You know, that alone, you know, can, you know, because going through that door, you're gonna let out a lot of, as opposed to going through the front.
Going through the foyer where you have...
It's a double door.
Sense. That's good, that's a good...
Yeah, just let me know if Thursday works for you.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
Oh, yeah.
Anyways, thanks for the... Department had reports, police department's not here. Do you have something for them or no?
Nope, he's on vacation.
Okay, okay. Department of Public Works. Mr. Walden.
How's everybody tonight?
Good.
How you doing? Part for the course. It's fall and it's getting cold out, so that means we're getting trucks ready for winter and wrapping up whatever roadwork we can. Winterizing buildings, winterizing lawn sprinklers, blowing leaves, the usual things you might think of when you think of fall, winter. Just recently had a new hire, like, welcome Mark Cross to our team. He comes with some experience from the state of Vermont and the city of Rochester. We're pretty hopeful that he'll be able to fit right in and hit the ground running. He doesn't need a whole lot of training beyond familiarization with the town. Today was his first day and seems, seems like a good guy. Seems like he's gonna work out for us. That and trying to, the only other thing we're trying to do is piece together the trucks we have and hope they make it through. That's all I got.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Oh, actually, before you walk away, Bill, nice job on the, you guys did a great job at the entrance to the transfer station and that. And actually, I've got one other thing I could, because I did, I know Virginia, just having Virginia here sitting here reminded me. We did go and meet with a couple guys that are gonna pick up the debris. So, make arrangements with you when they get ready, all the stuff that, if you've already seen the stuff and everything else, they are gonna be trying to do it here within the next month or so.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to give you that heads up before I forget, so.
We're, we're not done with the entrance to the transfer station yet. We actually have some lettering coming for the plow.
Yeah, well, it looks good though. I mean, what they, what's been done so far between the tower, putting the plow in there and getting that, the blocks in, I mean, it divides it off nice. It's good. It looks a lot better than it did.
Yeah, we'll have arrows pointing to our office, arrows pointing to our transfer station and the town seal on either side. So, Sharon's gonna help us out with that. So, we're, so far, I think it's gonna look pretty good. We've seen some kind of crude sketches, but I think it'll look good. As soon as he gets done with his ball work that he gets busy with, he's gonna be prepping some stuff for us.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, town clerk. He went home.
I think he's, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, up, so up next is the Board of Selectmen signing closing documents for Jonesburg Payne Conservation easement property.
Which actually puts a wrench in the work for this one, because we need a JP here to...
Yeah, notarize.
Notarize all of the, when you sign them. So, I need a motion for you guys to...
Yeah, to sign the...
Be able to sign these, but you have to sign them in front of Brian because they are closing documents. So, I need you to sign them in front of Brian. So, I'll have to give all of these documents to Brian, have you guys come in.
That's fine.
Tomorrow at some point, I'll write it here and you guys can refer to all of these documents in front of him.
Well, I will make a motion to move forward with those two pieces of property and signing the easements.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Up next, Public Works.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you.
Oh.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Because I won't be here for your signing tomorrow. I appreciate your signing. We'll get the easement, final closing will be November 13.
Good, thanks.
Up next, Public Works director wants to speak with the Board of Selectmen about a possible purchase of a backhoe from the Highway Special Equipment CRF Fund.
So, everybody got their email?
Yes.
Been talking pretty much since I started this position about the need for a secondary way to load salt in the winter. Been kind of shopping around here and there, looking for something all year. I, I put a couple of the dealerships on notice and we got a call from Beauregard Equipment in Concord. They have a 2011 Case backhoe that's kind of fits our price range of what we got forward. It's a well-taken care of used machine. It's a 2011. We're just shy of 3,000 hours on it and comes with a bonus 12-foot pushbox that we could use for snow removal here and there. So, it's kind of a, an included implement in the price. We would like to move forward on this. Obviously with the blessing. But I think it's, it's the best deal we're gonna find and it's gonna ensure that we're able to provide the services that we need to provide in the event of a breakdown with the loader.
Okay, just how do you, give me a suggestion on how you wanna, I know in our CF...
CRF, yeah.
CRF, from, from what I'm understanding, has 35,000 usable.
Okay.
And I would like to cover the remaining 8,000 of the 43,000 that they're asking for the machine out of road construction. I think it's, it fits into that category. We're gonna be using it year-round. It's gonna be involved in road construction activities. It's gonna greatly help our, our paving situation as well, because it'll, it'll be an implement that we can take out to prep roads and things like that without having to lower our excavator on a trailer and turning in, you know, production. So, that would be my suggestion. If not, I think out of our, our supply line or something like that would, that would be...
I mean, I, I, I'm fine with scenario one. Do you guys have anything?
The only thing I'm, again, my only concern on it right now is nothing against needing a backhoe, but I have a couple things. One, yeah, we have the 35,000. We have to go and use eight from another source at a time where I've just got through telling, we just got through talking with the fire chief that we really need to see what happens here in the next week or two on what we need money-wise. And that's not gonna, I know that money comes out of those, those two funds specifically, but at the same point, remember we talked a little while ago about come January 1st, we are no longer restricted on the potential for trading or possibly getting a plow truck. On the Capital Improvement Committee, the plow truck came out in the top six items. The backhoe was further down the list, didn't make the final cut.
We lost due respect to the Capital Improvement Committee. They can be wrong.
Not saying they weren't. I was a part, I'm just letting you know what was there. So, it's whether or not the truck, you know, what's, which ends up becoming more important, only because of the road construction money that I'm actually talking about, Bill, because we've got money, potentially with the trade and what we have for highway trucks and road construction money to get a plow truck.
We do. I, I think that the, the need for the backhoe is almost as, it's right up there with the need for, for a new plow truck. If, if that loader goes down, the plow trucks are useless. The, the roads are gonna be ice skating rink. The loader has its electrical issues. We don't really take it far. It's not something I'm gonna take to West Milton. I, I think that I, I, once again, I, I appreciate all the work of the Capital Improvements Committee, but I think, I think that that backhoe, putting that backhoe so low on a list of priorities was a, was a mistake.
Oh, it's not low, by the way. It was only two notches below the list. The list got cut off at six. Normally, we go with eight to 10, but this has been, it, I think it was eight. So, it was, it's just that this year has been so tight, where we know what's gonna happen as far as the 2% cap. That was the only thing that kept that from being on that list at the time.
I, I understand and, and at the end of the day, it's the board's, and I'm bringing this because I feel it's something important and it's, it's the board's decision and I, I appreciate the feedback and I just think that it's a thing, it's a great deal on a piece of equipment that the town needs and I figured it was, it was worth bringing forward and sharing the information.
Appreciate it. Again, like I said, this is just, it's for my understanding too, you know, which way, where we're at. I mean, I know the condition we're at with plow trucks. I know the condition we're at with, we got the one loader on that at this point in time and, and it's aging equipment, so.
I just, when, when that equipment fails, all this falls back on me. So, when the roads aren't getting plowed or the roads are in ice skating rink, so these are the things I worry about and it's my, and it's your job to worry about the budget and where the money's gonna come from and I, I understand that. But this is something I do feel strongly about.
Well, I mean, I've sat in this chair and we've had to rent a piece of equipment to load trucks and it was not cheap. I can tell you that right now.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I know. It's a...
And it just, it's put in good sense to something that would never, would, would never, there's never a return on it because it's a piece of rental of equipment that is gonna be shipped back. And, you know, I've been in the loader personally myself, because, you know, I do load the school truck with it and I know it has its quirks. And, you know, this money that, that Bill is asking for is earmarked, you know, specifically for, it's not revenue that we can use to help, you know, pay the county bill with.
True.
And it's just, you know, it makes sense for me to, to, you know, and, you know, and I want to appreciate Bill's hard work too, because he's not asking for a new loader. He, you know, he's asking for a used loader that's in good, good shape, that will, you know, have, be an asset to the town. You know, if something happens to, because there is no way to load a truck down there if that, if that loader goes. I've thought about this for years, actually. I'm like, what, other than we renting a piece of equipment to load a truck, what are we gonna do? You know, and I've always said that to myself. What are we gonna do, you know, if this loader breaks down? And, I mean, they've tried to load a, load a truck down there with an excavator, but it takes, you know, days, you know, with a little, little bucket, you know, for hours.
What's the year of, I mean, what's, for, this is for public too. What's the loader's, the year of the loader right now?
It's 2011. It was, was not commercially used. It was a...
No, I'm talking about our loader.
It's a 2014, I believe.
Is it really?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I didn't realize it. I thought it was older, so.
And it was actually, it wasn't purchased brand-new, from what I understand. It was actually purchased as a used machine. It wasn't great. It's just, it's, there's, it really needs an overhaul at this point. There's certain bushings that can't be greased anymore and, so the, the front loader arms really need to be pulled apart. It's just, it's our workhorse. So, I mean, to have that thing down for a week, it disrupts operations at the dump. It disrupts our operations with loading material. So, I mean, since I started, we've been trying to get that in there to actually do the, the required stuff. And it seems like every time we get it in there and we're like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna commit to this, there's something that comes up where, where we have a need for it.
And the, and that, this piece of equipment's great too, because of the, some of the towns I used to work for had a backhoe and that's how they smashed down their, their, their dirty dumpsters.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, I, to tell you the truth, I don't, I don't know the reason why we, we didn't own one or why we got rid of the one we had. I, I'm guessing it just got worn out, but this is the only department of public works or highway department I've ever seen or heard of that doesn't own a backhoe. Or, or at least, I, I don't know of any others that don't have two sources of loading a truck. So, we're, the, these are the reasons I bring this to you. It's, we're, we're setting ourselves up for failure at some point in the future by, by not looking into these options. And I know we can't afford a new one by any stretch. I mean, because a new backhoe costs as much as a new plow truck. So, we're pretty close to it. I think they're somewhere, so this particular piece of equipment, if we were to go buy the brand-new, the 2025, is, they quoted me 180-something thousand dollars. And, and if it was, really, if it was commercially used, I wouldn't have been as interested in it, but it was, it was actually owned by a, by a private guy and he had like a quarter mile long driveway or something. So, we bought the, the backhoe with the pushbox.
Will help us around the parking lots and everything else too.
Yeah, it's, it's got a lot of uses. I mean, it can serve some removal. We have a clogged culvert or we have a ditching issue or something like that. I have three guys minimum need to go out because you have to have, you have to load the excavator, you have to truck it there. You have to have people watching traffic. With the backhoe, we can pull off on the side of the road and one person in a pinch could operate on the side of the road or something like that. Like I said, I've been, I've been looking around and this is probably the best deal I've found and I'm thankful that Beauregard Equipment called about it, but like, like I said, that, that's what it is and that's how I'd like to fund it if possible.
Matt? Do you have anything to say?
I mean, I think it's a, I really do think it's a good idea if we needed, because I was pricing out winter, winter rentals for loaders and I was gonna spend almost 40 grand for five months on a loader, so. I think it's definitely, definitely needed, that's for sure.
Do you know what we have left in the construction?
It should be somewhere, 70,000 is safe, but I think there's actually more.
I know we haven't used it. I just wanted...
Yeah, no, no, yeah, 70,000 is a safe, but, but I believe it's more, but it's no less than 70 right now.
Per this, this expenditure, uh, February 28th, it's 76,169.
Okay. All right, so we got it. Thank you. I didn't even really, oh, we had it on the back of this tonight.
I mean, I mean...
It, it does make sense. I mean, I'm not, I, I want, I'm not arguing on that. I'm just wanting to make sure of which way do we want to go, because we knew it was, no was no for this year with trucks and next year, I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to... Hopefully we'll be able to get some, we'll be able to get by without any major issues, but no matter what, we've got equipment that's gonna give us a hard time this, this winter.
Right, yeah.
He's playing the devil advocate here, um. I mean, what, what do you have left to do for road construction? Um, what would you, for eighty grand?
It, it carries over in the next year, so. Um, I'm, I'm in pretty good shape with a lot of things, like materials and stuff like that and the asphalt plants are closing down. So my plan was to hold over till spring and have that money to apply.
We can use road construction money with the heavy equipment money too.
Right.
Towards a plow truck if necessary, once we hit January first. So that can still be utilized that way if necessary, because that's.
Good to talk about.
Yeah.
Good to talk about it, because.
We need to be prepared just in case.
Right.
And, and I. Obviously, if that's the case, we're not buying a new one, I mean, that'd be similar to where we're at, trying to find a, a. I prefer buying a truck.
Me too.
You know, an older truck that's got no def system in it and everything else and knowing that we'd have, have a reliable diesel truck to keep pushing if we had to.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, preferably, I'd rather have one that's pre emissions.
Yeah.
Or a brand new, since they've got all the roads worked out, but.
The way, yeah, well, but the difference cost wise, obviously, we know this, it's a huge difference there.
Yeah, and, and I mean, and I, I look at, like, I think we're coming into that season, it's kinda like when you buy a snowmobile. Like, when I was looking at stuff during the summertime, it was all cheap and now we're coming into plow season.
Oh, yeah, the prices.
Sale is gonna be a premium now, so stuff that I looked at for thirty thousand is gonna be sixty thousand. Just because everybody's looking for that now, but. But, I, I mean, yeah, I see it from both sides of the fence, I just think that. Doesn't matter how many running plow trucks we have, if we can't load salt and.
True.
So that, that would, that was, that's kinda my justification there.
Unit can help clear a road if needed to, so. As it could help clear a road.
Oh, correct, yeah, I mean, the, the, like I said, the twelve foot push thing, it's a bonus, um, we could, we could do our parking lot, we could buzz over to the fire department and EB, so. That, that's the other turn of the coin, is if I have to start putting pickup trucks that normally do parking lots on the road because something goes down. That backhoe is the perfect parking lot machine, so we won't really skip a beat in any area of it. So that, that's where I'm at and that's, that's my argument or my case for the whole deal. You know, obviously, it's a, it's a, a purchase that you guys need to approve, so. I'll, I'll leave it, um, like I said, I respect the decision either way.
Do you have a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to move forward with purchase of this, use, utilizing the CRF fund. Whatever the correct name of that is and road construction. How much out of, uh, the CRF?
Thirty, the thirty-five.
How much is in there?
Third, well, it's thirty-five and change, but that includes, because it, you looked at the total amount, it says thirty-nine, but we can't spend the thirty-nine.
The thirty-five usable, you said, Bill?
Thirty-five usable, so if you, if you went with thirty-five and eight, I think you're alright.
Yeah, that motion right there.
Go second?
You second it, I'll second it.
All in favor?
I just need a second motion that the chairman can sign the voucher, once finance completes the voucher for the trustees of the trust fund. For that thirty-five thousand dollars coming out of that CRF.
I'll make the motion for the chair to sign the voucher.
Second. All in favor? Alright, appreciate it. Can I do your proud?
No, like I said, it, it's good to go and discuss the whole thing before we, you know. Make sure where we're at, so.
Thank you. Alright, um, up next, follow up on replacement of computers at the police department in town hall.
So we talked about this earlier in the year and then we talked about it last meeting. The, we have three computers here at town hall and then unfortunately, all of the desktop computers and. Five of the, um, more of that units for the police department do not take Windows eleven, they will not upgrade to Windows eleven. They need to be replaced. The quote that we received earlier in the year is still valid. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to replace the ones at the police department using the technology fund. It should be thirty thousand dollars in that CRF. So we'd like to spend the money to replace the MDTs and we need to replace three desktop units. Uh, at the police department out of that technology account. Um, I'm only looking to replace one of the desktop units here at town hall. Um, and I'll take that out of my equipment purchase line in my budget. Uh, I don't think that it's necessary right now to replace the, two of the units. Two of the units are the units for this room and the other meeting room. So those aren't high priority units, um, to push those forward, so those can wait. And we can get those done as we get closer to the end of the year.
I mean, unfortunately, this is something that we have to do.
We're gonna have to replace this, replace them, so. The police department is a big issue, because not having the updates by Windows and putting those units at risk with. Criminal justice information flowing through them is not a risk I'm willing to take. With the officers using those on an everyday basis, so this will hopefully.
I saw the bat signal.
Okay, um, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to move forward with the computer purchase using the technology upgrade line and you, your equipment purchase line for the.
Okay, um, there's also the radio and technology line from the police department, we're gonna zero out that CRF finally.
Okay.
Because that CRF was supposed to have been zeroed out a few years ago and for some reason never was, but.
The technology line, so yeah.
Technology line.
Use that first, yeah, use that first and then do the other one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have your stamp?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Does, does, does Brian here, Brian, you, you, you wanna do your, your department, um. You're all sat there?
No, let's just do this.
That's what he's here for?
Yep.
Yep.
Is over there saying?
He said the, the bat signal.
Any three initials, one from each of you on the bottom of that one?
Great job, Brian, thank you.
I was watching, I was watching.
Proud of you.
Good man.
Tonight was your. Three initials at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm hand, I'm handing them back and forth. Got a second set of signatures in.
These one too.
Just the one.
There's signatures throughout this whole pack.
Yeah, no, I know that, I know they're all over.
On that one? Both of you are signing.
Yes.
This is the second page, you guys gotta sign on the second.
The second page too.
That page. And the last page of this.
You watching all this?
It's two of them out.
Okay.
Last page. Last page of that one.
You're just missing this.
This is huge.
Just Chairman Rosson. This one just has. Chairman Rosson and Phil Kimmoral on the second to last page. Yours is not, your name's not on there.
It's okay with me. Design. I'll be printed it, so you just need to sign it.
Phil Kimmoral. And these must have done.
Roger Bryan. Got a lot of stamping too.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
We don't have to do it tomorrow.
Okay, so we go through the computers. Okay, uh, notification to the board and residents about. A phishing scam about the planning board applicants that is going on, or two applications, warning applicants about the scam.
So unfortunately. The town got hit with, well, the town didn't get hit, but a new applicant got hit with, um, a phishing scam that's going around to planning board. People who are putting in new planning board, uh, applications, um, they're taking their email address and they're sending people bills. Through email and telling them to pay the new bill through either an ACH wired transaction or through a credit card. This is the style invoice they're sending to people. With this type of a bill. And trying to get people to pay that invoice. Thankfully, the person who received it called me right away to notify me that they had received it. So we will be, um, removing email addresses when we post. The applications, as we're required to post the applications, uh, when we receive them, but we will be removing the. Email addresses so that the phishing scam cannot happen. The town of Milton does not take, um. Age, we don't take wire transactions to pay your bills, we also don't take credit cards in the planning department at all. Um, and this letter will be going to all planning board applicants, um, from this point forward. So just to warn them about the scams, so that they're fully aware of what's happening and so that way, no one gets. No one gets caught and no one tries to pay one of these, pays one of these scams. Thinking that they're paying the town of Milton so that their project doesn't get held up. The email that they're sending these scams from is not even close to a town of Milton email, so. If they look at their email and they look at the wording on the email, they look at the wording on the document that is coming to them, they'll see that it's not coming from the town of Milton. Um, so hopefully, no one gets stuck with it and no one gets caught and that letter will go and hopefully will warn everybody so that they don't get caught with it.
Thank you for.
Gotta fix the title.
Your hard work.
Yeah, I know. Have a good day.
That's alright, so you gotta just make sure.
Alright, thanks, Richard.
Clever little bastards.
Yes, they are.
These, the scams that are going around right now.
Unbelievable.
Are, yeah, I wish the folks would use their brains for good. Because we probably would have no deficit in our entire country if these people, you do what they're doing to scam people in a good way.
People would just get real jobs.
Well, that too.
It'd be nice, but it would be good.
It's too bad, because, you know.
That'd work into.
Could affect, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter if you have money, if you don't, but it could really, somebody who, who is, you know, um. You know, living paycheck to paycheck, but trying to do good for their families or whatever and then they get scammed. It's really unfortunate, so, um. Thank you for your due diligence, Richard. Anyways, um, up next, uh, preliminary review of twenty twenty-six warrant articles.
So, so far, I've met with most of the departments and asked them to get me their. Projected warrant articles for next year. Gave the board a list of where we're at so far, um, and some of the warrant articles. Some of the wording for some of the warrant articles, some of them, I have not finished the wording on those warrant articles yet. But this is just the projection of where I see us moving forward with some of the warrant articles. Police chief has talked to the board about a warrant article to add a school resource officer and have that warrant article be. Half in the police department's budget and half in the school budget. He's explained to the board why he thinks that's appropriate. Um, in your packet, you'll see the wording that he would like to use for the warrant article. How he breaks it down and what his recommendation is on the funding for it.
I think this is, you know, something that is in much of a need. Because I am in the school all day. I just can't believe, you know, health insurance. Is half a salary. It's unbelievable how, how expensive. But again, I'm, I think that this is. Much needed. Position, but that's just my own opinion.
So here in Town Hall, as I spoke about in my budget presentation. We are two positions short to be able to really manage the workload of the year. But I'm asking for one position in a warrant article to the Board of Selectmen and then to the residents. If the board approves it, that position would be shared between the Finance Department and the Town Clerk. Both of those departments need a another position themselves. Mr. Chairman, as you said before, Finance Department used to be three posi-, three people. It's now been brought down to one person in Finance. And as we have seen over the last year or so, the Town Clerk's office needs that extra body as well. That extra body would be very helpful to both Finance and to the Town Clerk's office to be able to take some of the workload off. So that the Town Clerk and the Finance, Finance Manager can work together to do both tasks and the Finance. That Finance person would also be able to assist with doing payroll that would take that off of the Finance Manager's responsibilities. And allow them to worry more about all of the other issues that we have going on.
And I agree with you, I mean. It's a lot of work for one person. You know.
Three people doing it.
Finance and, and the thing is. You know. She's, she's obligated, you know, to be able to take vacations and so forth and unfortunately to be sick. And, you know, when she's not in that office. Nobody's in there. And. You know, and, and, and it's a lot of, it's, the, the workload is a lot for one person and, you know, unfortunately, she's good at her job, but you know what? She's under a lot of stress a lot of times and mistakes can be made. And it's just not fair. I mean, I do remember one that had three positions in there. And so I, yeah. Do you have anything, Matt?
So the other warrant article that will come out of the town is obviously to request the residents to replenish the technology CRF. We do have servers at multiple agency, at multiple departments that are ultimately gonna need to be replaced. So we need to start replenishing that CRF. Their revaluation CRF, that was created many years ago. We tried to put money away into that this year. It was voted down. That's something that the board needs to make a decision on. Are we going to try to put money into that CRF again this year? Or are we just going to roll the dice and in twenty twenty-nine give the residents a hundred and thirty thousand dollar boost in their tax rate? That is required by state law for us to do that process. In my opinion, it is. In my opinion, it's a much smarter budget plan. Put money into that CRF and break it up over a four-year window instead of trying to come up with all of it in one year. Knowing that the residents, they, they have to do it, it's state statute. We have to reevaluate in twenty twenty-nine. We know the cost is gonna be between one twenty-five and one forty at that point. So if we're putting money away now, when we get to that point, it's not a huge spike in the budget come twenty twenty-nine.
Well.
So I will.
Taxpayers, most of us in this room, I can say we all are. And I would much rather, you know, put this bill over four years than, than try to. Come up with it in one year. It's just makes sense and it's just good budgeting. So we have to somehow educate the taxpayers on, this is what we're trying to do to make it a lot easier. For them and for us, so. Get the good word out.
So the next one is, I called it a COLA warrant article. Or can call it whatever they want. I gave you guys a breakdown of possible COLA change to the employee handbook and the employee retention plan. In listening to some residents when we talk about the employee step plan and when we tried to correct the employee step plan this year. One of the comments you heard from some of the residents was, well, when we have lean years, you don't see the employee retention plan going down. You see it going up, but you never see it going down. The other problem is, is that we all know that cost of living and inflation has not been two percent for a very long time. Looking at the way a lot of other communities are doing it, many of the other communities are basing it off of the CPI. And they do it off the CPI in November. So basically, we would do the CPI here in November of this year, which would allow us to create our budget for the future year. And then that would go towards creating the budget next year as well. This would allow us to look at CPI this year, figure out what people would be getting for a possible raise based off of COLA. Starting July one of twenty twenty-six. The plan would be that, so if we just use this year as an example, that would be three point one is what CPI is right now. So it would be a three point one possible raise. If you get, or you're, you'd be eligible for an additional one point five percent for a merit raise. But for you to get a merit raise, once you get your evaluation, you'd have to score a one hundred to a ninety-six percent on your merit raise to get the full one point five. If you scored a ninety-five to a ninety-one, you'd only get one percent of a merit raise on top of the COLA. If you scored a ninety to an eighty-six, you'd get point five of a percent. Eighty-five to eighty-one, you'd get no merit raise. If you scored an eighty to a seventy-six, you'd lose a half a percent off of your COLA raise. And if you scored a seventy-five to a seventy-one, you'd lose an entire point off of your COLA raise. And if you scored below a seventy on your merit evaluation, then you would get no COLA raise for the year. The way I've also written this is that there would be a cap built into the COLA. COLA could not exceed four percent CPI. And if there was a four percent CPI that year, no employee would be eligible for the one point five merit raise. COLA could also, CPI could also not go, fall below one percent CPI. So I think this, if we put this into a warrant article, we sent this to the residents. The residents vote this in and this goes into the employee handbook as something voted through by the residents. As a formal document, formal agreement with the residents and our employees into our employee handbook. This would then make the employee retention plan just a grade and step plan. That would then allow our, our department heads and our Board of Selectmen to then use that grade and step plan. On a starting pay on when we bring people in, not as the grade and step plan as to raises for each year.
If this fails, that warrant article. Does that mean that we wouldn't be able to give any raises for that year?
It doesn't still. It doesn't stop our retention plan.
Okay.
No.
I just wanna make sure because that wouldn't be fair to the.
No, but this will replace the retention plan as far as that goes. That's how it's written. This would replace it, but if not, then it continues on the retention plan, so you don't lose anything.
And I certainly don't wanna set.
Oh, we can't take anything away from.
Employees up, or employees up for.
Nope.
Failure. I mean, it's just not, they don't even make enough as is, so.
This would not take, this would not remove the retention plan. If this fails, then this, just this wording, this would not allow us to give a COLA raise.
The, the big thing on this and, and Bob, I'm glad you're here because we've been talking about this in the Budget Committee too. The biggest thing for something along these lines for all of the things we put forward is to come together as a group. It can't be just the three of us going up front going, okay, this warrant article and here's the reason. We need to make sure the Budget Committee, the department heads, everybody's behind these things, you know, as a group. And, and you and I, we've talked about this too. But. If we don't, then we're never gonna push anything through. The one thing that we talked about in the Budget Committee, and I know Rich and I have talked about this COLA one for a while too, is. Our people have never gotten a cost of living adjustment, which is the standard across, not just communities, it's across the board in just about every business. It's definitely federal and state thing that's done. So, okay, instead of trying to push and say we're gonna just jump to retention plan, which by the way was a five percent to ten percent increase. This is a little bit easier to sell. This, I, I think it did a preliminary thing, I think when we talked, it was like twenty-three or twenty-four thousand dollars shift for next year.
Yeah.
It was, as opposed to the sixty, which we were looking at with the retention plan. But it gives, it gives an incentive to the employees. The harder they work, the better, the, the better their, you know, their increase. It's, it can't be though that everybody's a ninety, ninety-six and ninety-seven and above. It's just gotta make sure that with the department heads that honest, you know, honest evaluations, where are they at? If they, if they score well enough, then yeah, you could get additional, you know, even more increase to your salary. But it's not as costly as changing the whole retention plan.
Right. And it's, I mean, this is, it's all about retaining help.
Yep.
Retaining our good help that we have in, in Milton. I mean, we're, we have some really good help in Milton. And this is just a way to, to be able to retain them and keep them. So, and it's consistent. I like it.
So for the fire department, I'll let the fire chief come up and he can talk about his. You guys have his proposed warrant articles written down?
The only two I had was the, the hiring, which we talked about, but we pulled that out of the budget and we were gonna do a warrant article. And then the capital reserve, which is the standard one at fifteen thousand dollars. And then over the weekend. I was thinking about. My presentation to the Budget Committee the other night, where I was talking about. How I basically, I felt like I made my case to the Budget Committee about the needs that we have with various incremental increases in certain lines. But the default budget is not allowing us ever to get to that point. So. I called Rich at like noon on Sunday and I'm like, hey, I had this crazy idea. Can you, can you talk about it with me for a couple minutes? And my thought was we'll just completely pull the fire department out and put a standalone warrant article for the fire department budget. And then put that in the, the hands of the voters. Do they want this or do they not? By the end of our discussion, I basically said I would draft something that, that included the increases. That I presented to the Budget Committee and to the board. On top of what was approved by the board and the Budget Committee last year. And if the voters think that we should have that, then they can support it. If they don't, then we stick with the ones that we approved last week. And that would include the, the position, the additional money for the part-time line to pull it off of the revolving account. And. The other thirty thousand of various maintenance lines and equipment lines and testing. That I had asked for increases on training. And, and we can, if you guys are in favor of something like this, I can break it down more. And fine tune it, like even the hiring article, I didn't know the exact number to put in for insurance, so. I'll get with Rich and, and fine tune it depending on which direction you guys, what your thoughts were on this.
Well, I know the fire service is tough. You know, you talked about it earlier. Some departments that surround us, scary out there. And. I think we have a awesome fire department. And. You know, we. I mean, you know, some of this stuff, you know, it's hard, the, the big pills to swallow, but you know. I know when I call the fire department, I, they're always there at my house if I need them, so. Yeah, I mean.
And. I mean, we do what we can, but like I've, like I said, Bob's group the other night, like. The inflation and the cost of doing business is not maintaining the, what we're. Allowed to increase the budget by, by any stretch of the imagination. Things have doubled in the last five or six years, but the budget's only. Certain areas of the budget have been level funded for six, seven, eight years, vehicle maintenance being one of them and equipment purchase and uniforms have incrementally increased. But not by the cost of, I don't have off the top of my head what it was, but I had a slide for the Budget Committee. About the cost of gear in two thousand eighteen or nineteen versus the cost of gear today. And then what the budget increased and it was like ten thousand dollars short to buy the same stuff we were able to buy in two thousand eighteen. So. This, this corrects that without jeopardizing the, the overall town budget. Gives the voters an opportunity to decide if they want to or not.
And I know with the maintenance budget, I'm sorry Humphrey, but.
Well, no, it's okay.
Thinking, you know, with a maintenance budget, the only new piece of equipment we have is an ambulance. Everything else that we own is old. It's old.
Our newest engine's twelve years old now. It's most typical like expectancy is ten to twelve years frontline. And then another ten to twelve years in reserve. Obviously, that's not the case. There's no, there's no new engine in sight anywhere, so. Even if we were to order a new one today, it'd be two to two and a half years before we start and obviously, that's not gonna happen, so. Fifteen years, that truck will be running first due for at least fifteen years. Best case scenario. And then the old, the backup one, or the, you know, engine three and the truck and the mills are. Aging just as quickly.
My thing on it, I. I'm glad you didn't decide to try to put the whole budget in, because I don't think that would have been wise, number one. Especially with the way the two percent and all the other stuff cap backs in. The hiring part, yeah, when we get the insurance, that, we already, we're in agreement on the hiring.
Yeah, the, the number for the one we did a few years ago was fifty-two and one oh five.
That's pretty, this is gonna be pretty close as far as that goes. My question on the supplemental is how you've got it worded right now, okay? And I know you just worked on it.
I just worked on it.
No, I know, but I, this is just for conversation's sake at this point. You're gonna have the fire department hiring to also say in here that this is going to cover the hiring. That kind of a conflict there. You're gonna be, you, you can't, to me, you're not gonna get approval going, wait a minute, we're hiring and then we're hiring. Or paying for the hiring twice, so.
The supplemental.
The supplemental part is intended to help with the.
No, the supplemental, he won't do both of them.
I won't do it.
That's, well, that's all I'm getting at. If you go that route. That.
It would either be the first and the third or the second and the third.
Okay, well, that's kinda why I'm asking. It's like if you did, because you could also do it with the hiring one. And you could have a supplemental that wouldn't include that.
Yep.
Now, and that may, here's the thing. If you've got them both, you may have a chance at the fourth full-time firefighter. If you have just the one, you may not get any of it. So. To me, because I understand what you're doing, we've talked about this and everything else. There's, there's a few things, because I'm not gonna tell you how to run the budget at this point. That's not what this discussion is. But to me, if you're gonna have the hiring, I think having a hiring line and figuring out if you really need supplemental, don't include the hiring aspect of it. Do something supplemental to explain what, what else is in there that you were after.
Right.
But if you, because if you don't. That, here, here's the take.
I don't disagree with you, honestly.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is we know the operating budget's high. We're gonna be discussing that in a few moments. It's, don't, we, Rich and I have gone through the numbers. The budget should be all set, not exceeding the two percent cap. That doesn't give us a lot of play. So anything that does, any warrant article here that does, and, and I can tell you the hiring and things like that, we know that's gonna end up being there. It has to pass with sixty percent. The higher the number, the harder it's gonna be to get sixty percent. So figuring out. People, people could support. Hiring the additional full-timer, but may, may not support a supplemental on top of it, so. So I'm gonna leave it up to you, how you wanna put a warrant article, how you wanna put the warrant articles forward. I do agree with the capital reserve fund because we talked about it there. That's how we try to get some of the money back in on these capital reserves.
I'd love to disagree with you, but I think you probably already convinced me, so.
Can you mark that down, Rich? Or Amy, mark that down, please? But, yeah.
And then the other one I didn't write on, and we've talked about it briefly. And then the other one I didn't write on, and we've talked about it briefly, was there is a capital reserve for vehicle maintenance, which we haven't funded. In a long time, but we are gonna be using that, that's where the forestry skid's gonna come from, the vehicle maintenance or repair and upgrades, whatever it's called. So I don't know if you, if you guys are interested in re-establishing or replenishing that, or if you just wanna ride it for another year and see how things go next year. I don't care one way or the other, just it's planning purposes and it's up to you guys what you wanna do.
And I've already had a lot of discussions in regard the fact that we were able to get some contract stuff to cover maintenance, I think with what we're trying to do. More warrant articles we put out, the harder it's going to be, but. I think we may be able to, it, it, it's never gonna be perfect, obviously, but I think if you ride that one with what you're trying to do here. That you've got a better chance.
And I think some of this thirty thousand and this, the latter part of this warrant. That, I'm okay with not doing it, but I wanted to remind you that we've talked about it and it does exist and we may need to do it.
You adjust the supplemental including that aspect of it, you wouldn't need to turn around and, and have that as well as the cap. Cause I don't disagree with the capital reserve fund, we talked about that, that was one of the things, but if you put it here, you think you're gonna get it near additional maintenance information if it goes through.
How did the testing go on, on the pumps?
Engine three had some problems, right?
Yeah, had primer problems.
Primer problems, and it's worn a little bit, but it's okay, it's gonna need a rebuild at some point.
And so, this is.
And that's exactly what that capital reserve is intended for, is major pump overhauls and, or major engine overhauls, if we need to do a radiators, that was. Ten grand last time we did that, but it was, that was two thousand.
We gotta be looking at those kinds of things, as opposed to pulling it from a regular, the regular maintenance lines in there should not be. Really something that you're gonna get into anything over the five to ten thousand dollar range anyways, that's what the kid.
That's why I'm very protective of that capital reserve, cause there's not a lot of money in there, and if we do need to do an engine or radiator or pump, it's gonna be twenty, thirty grand probably. Probably being conservative. I'll redraft. And then Rich, if I can, if we can just fine tune that number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was playing my cheer part, but go.
Oh, no, I was gonna just touch on DPW. Um, so the next one is DPW road construction. After talking to the public works director, that one warrant article, we're gonna ask for four hundred thousand dollars this year instead of the three eighty. Winding Road Bridge, Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, as the board already knows, we need two hundred thousand dollars for that warrant article this year. So that way we make sure we have the money put away for that, uh, when it comes time for that. I spoke to the public works director and we are going to put a warrant article in front of the board for the lease purchase of two. Uh, six-wheel dump trucks. We did talk quite a bit about whether or not we should just do one this year, or we should do two. When we put it in front of CIP, it was two, so, and CIP supported two. Um, it's up to the Board of Selectmen how you wanna go forward, if the board wants us to switch that to only one this year, um, we can. I know, again, this is another year, this is another warrant article, um, we're both, public works director and I both heard residents. When they were talking about this warrant article this year in twenty twenty-five. Their big thing was, why aren't we staggering the purchases? Well, this will be a two-year stagger now, um, we have the ones that we purchased in twenty-four. Now we'll have the ones that we, if we purchase in twenty-six, that'll be your two-year stagger. You expect the new trucks, Bill, ten years out of them?
At least, I, I think so far so good with the two that we have, uh, we haven't had no one issue with them. Uh, the last batch of them, I think they had issues from day one.
Day one, yeah.
Oh, heck, yeah.
They had an issue the first day they got in the parking lot, so.
Here's, here's a thought, and I don't know, I mean, I've seen crazier things in towns. If we had two of these things. Two warrant articles, I'm curious, in other words, one that has two on it, and if it passes, the second one doesn't need to go through, if the first one fails and we get one. I don't know if it's possible to do it that way or not, you know what I mean?
I, I don't know, I can ask.
I mean, I, I'd like to find, I mean, maybe they'd support one if they wouldn't support two, but I mean, if we just get the two shot down again, we're, we're back to another year. And not been able to do anything.
Out of transparency, I was talking to Bill about this today, and I just think that. You know, we're setting, I mean, I feel, for one, I feel, I honestly feel bad about, well, one, roads barely get plowed now. And it's not their fault, um, but for two, um, you know, we, we really setting, in my opinion, setting, setting this. This up for failure because. You know, we're asking for, you know, a little bit more in road construction, which we really need, because our infrastructure is falling apart. Four hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money to take care of this whole town in trying to keep the roads in, up to, you know, snuff. Uh, we need winding bridge, um, is, we need it, period, um. I mean, we're renting a bridge, we, we need to move forward with it, we need the money, um, it failed last year and it shouldn't have. But now we, we're gonna have to try to come up with more money now this year, and um, I just, I just think that. I mean, I, if that, if, if that's possible, I like that idea, but I just, I think personally, we should ask for one.
Well, that's kinda my concern, that if we, I, I, if, I'd like to be able to do it with two of po- two and one if possible, if not, I think, I agree. I don't know if we can, as much as we need to, I have to agree that the, the more money we put in front of them, the, the less likely it's gonna go through.
You know, at the first of the, or the first of the year, because right now, we, we really only have. We have two new trucks, but we have a couple of toilets that, um, there's no other way to put it. That are barely running, um. Right, Bill?
Yeah, so, well, they're running, it's just a matter of when something happens, cause it happens every year.
Yeah, we know that the system does not work well.
So, I, I came up, because I think it's a great idea, if we can do it, and maybe even ask for one and one.
Well, that's the state, one and one or two and one, and figure out how we do it.
Ask for, you know, uh, will the town raise and appropriate for the purchase of, of one, and then the next one can say, will the town raise and appropriate the money for a second? And, and that a way, that, that gives the taxpayers the.
I get one, yeah, when, again, you know.
So that a way we're not.
In, in all honesty, I think, Bill, cause that's one of the, one of the thoughts, because if we have two and one, somebody may just say, no, yeah, and you know, and go after it. If it's two of them, and, and I'm, and I'm hoping that one way or another we'd get something, if we put one and one, they're gonna go. Uh, why, you know, that's the only thing. There's.
I think you can put wording into a warrant article that says, if warrant article six passes.
Well, you can do that.
Article eight is known.
No, we can do that, for sure, that's why I'm saying, it would be good if we said two and one, I think we got a better shot at two with one, if we can do it, than one and one. I really do.
Fair enough, but I love that idea, I, I actually got up to say that, so.
I got two of you guys tonight, thank you.
Yeah, blind squirrel gets a nut every once in a while.
Every once in a while, yeah.
We're on the right track with that, if, if it's something that we can do, uh.
And we can look, I mean, again, after January first, we can look to see if there is some sort of deal out there that we might be able to do with the old roll-off and. Money possibly, you know, road construction money possibly to find something.
Yeah, there, there's options out there, I mean, I, like I said, I think that, uh. You know, with the truck that we had looked at, that, you know, we had kind of all spoken about in separate situations, and then we figured out that we couldn't do any kind of trade deals there. I, I think those trucks are still available in that particular dealer, uh, they have, they have constant inventory coming in. Like I said, I just, I think a lot of that stuff ends up going for a premium in the winter, but. At the same time, if something does happen and a truck does, you know, we would have to expect to pay a premium on short notice either way, but, um.
Matt said about the same thing with the, you know, like renting anything. Bottom line, and, and I'm gonna speak up, because this was one of the things I hit last year, trying to get the, the trucks in the first place. That it's gonna cost us more money to keep the maintenance and, and rebuilding these trucks than it is to buy and, and lease new trucks. It's, if we have to rent plow trucks, it's gonna be as bad as trying to, you know, rent a, a loader of some sort. We're gonna be spending more than what these things are, that's the reason why we need to get.
Or if we have to hire a truck driver. That's not gonna be cheap.
You're not gonna find anybody, that's gonna be the problem, cause it.
Not with heavy enough equipment, that's, they're not gonna be here for that.
Well, especially you look at the state, the state retains these drivers for situations, but I mean, they're, these people are collecting a six hundred dollar stipend every two weeks. Just to be available for the state, whether it snows or not, so I think actually the stipend might be more now.
Yes, they are.
Last, last I knew it was, uh. Ten hours every, every pay period, which is two weeks, and they're averaging about a hundred thirty dollars an hour. Thirteen hundred dollars every two weeks just to be available, starting, last I knew was October fifteenth.
And then if they do come out, it's a hundred and thirty dollars an hour for them, to be there for the duration of the storms. My numbers are old, the last time I looked into it, it was six hundred and something bucks, but that's also almost ten years ago now, I guess.
I think it's, it's either, last I knew, a couple of years, a few years ago, it was either two or four hours guaranteed just for a salt run. If they get called out just as.
The minute they called out, they get.
It's four hours. Four hours now, yeah.
It's got potential to get really pricey.
It's got huge potential to get pricey.
And the state actually doesn't pay top wages.
No, that, that's actually even low, good Massachusetts and they're paying double what New Hampshire pays. For that truck. And that one thirty is only for a six-wheeler, with a plow and a wing and a spreader.
And it's funny, cause oddly enough, I'm actually more concerned about the newer of the two trucks that are left, cause I mean, that. I feel, I feel like knock on wood, that two thousand eleven is just chugging along for some reason. It hadn't been started since spring, and we gave it a sniff of ether and it fired and came to life, and it was fine after that, it was. But the other truck, you just look at it wrong and it throws a check engine light.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we got that homework, some homework to do, but I mean, with asking, you know, for road construction. The winding bridge is very, very important, and I just, I just don't, I, I just think that. Without educating the taxpayers, and we try to, but I don't think they'll go for two trucks personally. We need them, but I just don't think it's there, and I don't wanna set the highway garage up, uh, the highway department up again for failure. Because, you know, it takes the morale down and, um, you know, they already, unfortunately, are. Making a whole lot of money over there, so. We can talk about it further, I mean, getting closer, however, if you wanna look into the Humphrey suggestion, which I think is a good idea. I just know we need at least a truck.
With alternative ways of seeing what we can do.
And I think that the, uh, I mean, and I'll come right out and say it, the people that try and influence the vote every year, I think they, even they would appreciate the option. Uh, of being able to pick one or the other. So, I, I, I think honestly, two separate warrant articles would be a pretty solid plan. I think that would set us up for success a lot better than just one or the other. So the other, uh, DPW warrant article would just be the municipal building CRF, keep replenishing that. For sewer, um, we need to do the sewer facility study warrant article again. We need to finish that stu- we need to finish that, so we can get that, uh, I had hoped we would be ready to. Work towards putting a warrant article out for a bond to get the, um, the SBR facility put in place. But in doing research, found that the GIS data was incorrect, we don't own that property behind. So now I think, I truly think that the study, the study that we currently already have talks about an SBR. We need to have a dual batch SBR, um, just so that way we can have and build it for the future. But we need to have a location and need to figure out where we can put the ribs. I think we can put the ribs on that current property and then decommission our current facility and have that cleaned and taken down. But I think we need to have a study that tells us we can truly do that. I, I don't think we can try to move forward with a bond, build the new facility and go, oh, we can figure out the ribs part later. We can find town property later to pump this stuff to the ribs. I, I don't think that, in my opinion, I don't think that's a good plan to move the town forward in. I would rather, when we go to, for a bond to the residents, say, here's the full study, this is what we're going to do. This is gonna give us the opportunity for expansion, but it's also gonna clean up the current facility and the current problems that we have there. It's also going to give us the ability that we can decrease the number of EPA permits that we have to have, cause we're going into ground. Instead of going into the, the body of water.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, and I don't even like to hear this, but it's the truth, um, is, this is a town-owned entity. We, we own it, people in the mills own it, people in West Milton own it. And, um, unfortunately, um, it's not gonna go away, and we need to do something about it, because the feds are making us.
And it's just gonna get more expensive as we push it down the line.
Well, we had a good, and, but it's, not everybody was at the budget meeting when you spoke the other night, and this is true. One of the things that the town definitely needs, obviously, to help offset property taxes for residents is businesses. And right now, this, this doesn't wanna come into this town and go, okay, I gotta create a leach field and everything else for it. So, if that plant is built up the way it needs to be, then we've got a shot at building the infrastructure needed for Route seventy-five. And beyond, and there are businesses that are going to be moved out, I mean, Rochester's running out of real estate after the ridge. There are businesses over there, they're gonna wanna start moving this way, if we just move residents in, in other words, more homes are gonna get built too. It incre- it, 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 okay, there's gonna be more revenue coming in for taxes, but at the same time, there's gonna be more expenses for services. So, the reality is, is as you increase residents, you're increasing service needs, you're increasing school needs, we're gonna run out of real estate there too. So, putting in new homes doesn't have the same value as bringing businesses in. So, a sewer system that meets the needs that we have, is going to be, is going to help build Milton. In the right way, I'm not saying turn Milton into another city, obviously, that isn't the case, but to have businesses along that corridor. Is huge, and, and, and it make, it make a world of difference, because businesses will offset, that's why the ridge is gonna be so successful in Rochester.
We just have to use the Tilton model, if you just go and drive through Tilton. All of their business district is in one location, and it's right on a state road, and then you go into downtown Tilton. And it's the homey little rural community that everybody loves about New Hampshire. And i- if we use that same model here in Milton, we can keep our rural nature that we want to keep. And we have our businesses on state roads, right off the highway, they get off the highway, they get back on. If they wanna come into the, the downtown areas of the community, then we make it so that the downtown community is a draw to people. When they get off the highway, and I think we can, I think we can do that, we just have to be willing to look at the future and be planning and prepping. And building for the future.
I like that scenario.
Yeah, and Tilton does have that, if it's, you drive that, that route, once you come off the highway and drive through those two areas into there, it's.
And you're back into the rural aspect of it.
Then you hit Dover and there's nothing there. So my daughter lives, so I know that one well.
So, the other part of the sewer is. At the last meeting, I gave you guys that report that we got, um, the confined spaces issue that we need to fix ASAP. Jason received, it's not a formal quote, but what they believe the cost of fixing that right now is. Possibly between five hundred thousand and a million dollars to fix that confined space issue. Obviously, we don't know what it is to hire somebody to come in and work on that confined space every time we need someone to work on the confined space. But that's a huge cost just to fix that confined space issue. Again, I don't think we're ready for a bond warrant article for that facility, and I definitely don't think we're right. We don't have five hundred thousand or a million dollars just to fix the confined space area of a facility that we're ultimately going to replace. But it's something that we do have to fix, or we have to figure out a different way to fund how we're sending people down into that confined space. So that's something that the board is gonna have to have a conversation about, so I'll write a warrant article for it, and we'll just have to make a decision on. What we're gonna do with that aspect of it. The library, um, they're probably gonna move forward with their similar warrant article that they do each year. Uh, but they have not had a trustee meeting yet to. Uh but they have not had a trustee meeting yet to have that conversation, so once they do, I'll bring that to you. Um and I haven't received anything from conservation yet. They have their, yeah, once they have their meeting, it'll probably be a thousand dollar.
To me, we'll also have a uh.
There'll be a few planning board and then there'll obviously be E E N I head like we have every year.
That's a good start. Alright. Event permits?
Want to do a quick budget one on your.
Oh, budget review? I'm sorry, I didn't even, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm.
I mean, we can do the budget now or we can wait and do the budget on the seventeenth before.
I don't have to bring up the budget. Bob, I let me just pass on this then, instead of going into the budget, cause if we do it on the seventeenth, we got the joint meeting on the twenty fourth. Um one change that, the one we've already approved. Stratford Regional Planning, which is under the con- professional services for planning and code. They went up four hundred and fifty four dollars, but it becomes a default. It's a matched item because it's under professional services. So um I'll just flash this up on the screen quickly, just to show you guys. Where we're at, based on, and I put the numbers under the BOs as you guys knew from the last time. And I'm going to make it bigger, yes. Wait a few years, Randy, it gets so much better. So right now, and this is based off of what. Even though you see the three hundred and twenty seven thousand is under for the BOs, I mean, for the budget committee. They haven't voted on the insurance or outside appropriations. It's over here, that four oh nine will be back down to thirty two, cause I guess it's three fifty four, not uh four fifty four increase. Um based on what we need to look at uh in the outside appropriations. So one thing we can do here and and we talked about it the last time, I just wanna, I think we'll bring it up. Reeling through all this. The outside appropriations. The budget committee didn't vote on it because it's pending our looking at it, so. My opinion, and this is what I said the last time. What we've done with the, if we just stick to the default numbers and the only two that we're asking for more than the default. Is Cornerstone V and A and Wakefield Resource Center. If we stick to the. Default budget, then we will be thirty two dollars, thirty two total dollars under the default. If we increase anything here, we exceed the default.
It has to stay the same.
So, okay, I mean, if you guys are in agreement with that, then I can match this up and then all the budget committee has to do is. Agree to the default number. So if you guys are in agreement, that's the last of the things that we really need to get into. So the only other thing will be insurances, which we can't do anything until we get the numbers.
I should have the, I'm hoping to have the number by next.
How about that, Matt?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so I will have that ready. Um we'll be ready, Bob. I'll make sure that everybody has the adjustment.
Yeah, we haven't done the library either.
Uh we did the library. Yeah, we did the library in the last one. We just said, the only thing where I asked on the library is we approved the budget. But we wanna see minutes from the trustees later. For what they've asked for it. The trustees are the ones that set that, so but we need to see, we need to see minutes to talk to that, that's all. Alright, so if you guys are in agreement with that, I'll make those, make sure that, I mean, I did put the numbers in there. I'll leave it here showing that that's what they asked for and we'll be able to match it up on this side too. So the only other, like I said, the only other thing that changed, I will show you where that was, we're in business. Is planning and code, this is what Rich gave me earlier today. So when the planning and code went to sixty two ninety four, SRPC, yeah, yeah, Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Increased their amount um to sixty two ninety five. It was, so it went up three hundred and seventy seven twenty one. I made sure I showed the difference. They were showing it as four hundred dollars. It wasn't. It went from fifty nine seventeen to the sixty two ninety five. And I know, Matt, you and I talked about it for a few minutes just before the meeting. We need to get as much out of. Much help from them as we can and and they've been giving us a lot of assistance. Now it's time to. Continue pushing down that path, cause they can help us save a lot of money on other projects. We're still gonna need to hear from them too on the study for the three facilities that we haven't heard from.
The three facilities and the sidewalk audit.
Sidewalk audit, yeah.
And the state is waiting to hear about the sidewalk audit because we still have that five hundred thousand dollars.
Which will help us do some, the infrastructure work on the sidewalks themselves.
I don't wanna call it a grant. I think it's possibly a loan, but it has a matching portion. You guys went for years ago.
So we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes. So the total budget. Uh as it stands, will end up being just over six point two. Uh be six two seven, six million two hundred and seventy thou- uh two hundred. I don't know. Four hundred and something thousand dollars, because I gotta add that other money back in. In fact, I can show you what it is right now. I'll tell you what the budget is. Six two nine five. Just read to that. Six million two hundred and forty thousand six ninety one. That's where we're at, with the adjustment to the SRPC.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, anything else? Okay, event permits?
No event permits, no old business and no communications received. I do have two um other business.
Alright.
The first one is um we have the final change order document for the Jamco project for phase two. Um so I just need the board to make a motion to have the chairman sign this document. Uh it shows the final change order and it shows that the project came in about twenty thousand dollars under. What we had originally budgeted for, for the total project.
I'll make the motion for the chair to approve the change order.
Second. Just need to sign in the middle. And then the second item is, um while we're prepping and trying to get the um tax rate set. The auditor found that the board, when um doing the approval for the ambulance purchase. The the board forgot to make a motion to take the thirty three thousand dollars out of the CRF. And then have the chairman sign the trustees fund. So I need a motion from the board to take thirty three thousand dollars out of the two thousand five ambulance vehicle and equipment. And or fire department vehicle CRF, um and then with that motion, have the chairman sign.
I will make the motion to take thirty three thousand dollars out of the two thousand five ambulance vehicle. And equipment and or fire department vehicle CRF and for the chair to sign.
Second.
Hi, I can't breathe now.
Just there's signature on it, signature and title right. It's right in that last paragraph.
Just sign right above the last paragraph right here, signature and title.
Yep, for some reason it didn't create a line. I don't know why.
Alright, that's it for that stuff. Now we just can go to the public minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October twentieth.
On paper? Public comments pertaining to topics previously discussed. Do we have anything? Anybody? No public comments. Uh expenditure report?
Um you guys have a copy of the expenditure report. As you can see, we're staying about five percent under where we should be right now. So we're still, we're under and we're hovering close to where we should be. That's why it's staying frozen for now. Till we can get this tax rate set and we can get everything moving forward, make sure we're able to pay our bills.
Town administrator?
Uh your next regular scheduled meeting is the seventeenth of November. And then you have a joint meeting uh Monday after with the budget committee as your second joint meeting. Twenty fourth.
Yeah, it says twenty three.
Um to finalize the town's portion of the budget. That's all I have.
Okay, um sorry, I was just looking at my calendar. Um. Sleckman's comments?
My only one, I I mentioned part of it earlier. I met with Virginia. She called me this morning. Uh they got another company. Um Wingland Pickers or something. Anyways, these guys, the two other guys came out with Virginia. We went out and looked at the ball property. Where we had walked before. Um they gave us. Quote of six hundred and fifty dollars to remove, which I went, you know, which is a very good fee. I mean, it's it's. They're gonna get out there with a truck. The one thing we're gonna have to find out, we're gonna have to talk with Karen, is. Depending on which direction they come in with the truck, they might have to clear just a little bit of brush to get the truck in down there. That's not a big deal, but it's. Saw and water district property, so when I'm saying very little brush, it's a few limbs here and there that they'd have to trim up. And they said they'd do it and it's included in that, just to get out there. But there's um three spots on the property. Um that's, they agreed they will not dig anything up, so it's all surface, it's all surface stuff. They're gonna get uh with the commission on Wednesday, they're gonna give them the information, they'll give them an invoice. And they're insured, so they'll give them the copy of their their MS nine and their insurance policy, so. That'll be put in there.
Alright, um I just have a couple of things. Um exciting news really uh for the farm museum. Um next Monday, the tenth, they plan on moving the schoolhouse to the farm museum. So, you know, if anybody is interested in watching this happen, which is gonna be phenomenal. It's gonna go about a half a mile an hour from where it's where it's at, down to the farm museum. One twenty five would be shut off by state police and whoever, town police, I. I don't know what's going on with that, but anyways, um I just know that it's gonna be a big deal for Milton. Uh to preserve um this schoolhouse and put it to its final resting spot. So that is next Monday. I'm not quite sure what time they're gonna start. I'm sure probably fairly early. And um so you're gonna s- see the schoolhouse going down the road, so it's gonna be pretty fun. Um my other thing is um Mister Elder's asked me to read this into tonight's Sleckman's meeting. Um this is on We Care Food Pantry, um is in desperate need of some help this time of year. All 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 times of the year, I guess, but um Thanksgiving is around the corner. And um they're looking for, you know, they they're doing their food baskets to families in Stratford County. So thanks to the support of the community, We Care Food Pantry distributes hundreds of um Thanksgiving baskets filled with. Items to help families enjoy a warmth festive holiday meal. Baskets are thoughtful packed. Uh thoughtfully packed with um a variety of nutritious foods enough to provide a complete holiday meal for a family of four. Um typical contents include, um if one wants to donate, um is a uh. Gift card for a turkey or a ham, only because, you know, space is limited on frozen turkeys and hams. So, you know, a fifteen dollar gift card was mentioned, uh stuffing mix, gravy mix, but they will take frozen turkeys. I was told. Um so, but anyways, uh stuffing, gravy, cookies, dessert mix, canned veggies. Um baskets uh c- contents may vary depending on supplies, so they are looking for a fifteen dollar gift card. Um I don't know if they said it twice here, but anyways, uh Thanksgiving for our families to buy a turkey or ham. We also are in need of canned goods, jellies, juices, boxes. Um ru- ru- ramen noodles, I always say it wrong, but anyways, I don't eat that stuff, but anyways. Uh we take donations on Thursdays and Fridays at the food pantry. Located at three seventy White Mountain Highway uh in Milton. Um so to donate, or you can go donate online to um to We Care Food Pantry. So that's what's happening there and I just wanted to say, I just gotta pull the calendar up. I am having our our um food drive down at the Dollar General parking lot. Um on the fifteenth of November, so not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday. We always do a food drive down there and last year, people were really, really responsive and very, very nice. Um I think I collected like nine hundred bucks in cash and we filled a whole truck. So um so hopefully, we can do it again more. So, you know, with everything going on in in the world, they just need, you know, food. So it's a shame, but that's where we're at.
I do have something actually. So there's a uh fall food drive going around. Um there's a Facebook page, twenty twenty five Milton, New Hampshire Fall Food Drive. Uh it's being organized by a couple of different residents in town. Um it's gonna benefit local, the local food pantry, obviously, and sixty eight hours of hunger program. Um for the town. There's gonna be multiple drop off locations. I believe there's two here, or there's one here, two totes. There's gonna be one at Dunkin' Donuts. Um but if you go on the twenty twenty five Milton, New Hampshire Fall Food Drive Facebook page. Um you can just search that. Um it gives you a little bit, a little bit more information. Um there's gonna be some raffles at the end to, you know, if you donate. Uh you get your name put in, um comment on that page. Um different items and stuff from local businesses. I know Dunkin' Donuts is gonna donate. Like twenty five dollars worth of gift cards. Um Eastern Boats is gonna get involved and they're gonna donate some stuff. For the raffles and stuff like that. Um so it's obviously for a good cause. It's gonna run two to three weeks. Um the drop off bin at Dunkin' Donuts will be there tomorrow morning, but there's one or two here, I know. Um so, yeah, it's all food drives.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And just before we go, cause we, this is a lot of times, Veterans Day is next week. There's, they will have the celebration at the park next Tuesday. And shout out, I know veteran myself, but shout out to all the veterans and and current. Military members that are out there helping keep us safe, so.
Yeah, no, thank you.
About that, yeah.
Thank you and Matt and all our veterans. And one last thing before we go, um the elementary school and the high school. They do a food drive too, um and it's in place right now, so if, you know, uh they do. They actually get a lot of food uh from from the schools, so uh for the food, for our local food pantry. So that's that's happening right now too.
That's good.
Anyways, anything else?
Nope, that's it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.